All right, well, my computer says it's 6:30, so I'd like to get underway. As we have a lot of activity coming at us at 7 o'clock. All right, this is the zoning board of appeals from the town of Sherburne, we're being recorded. This is the continued petition for Ms. Carrie Rose to have outside for-pay exercise classes at her home in a residence district off Horse Brook Road. The hearing was continued from last week, I think Ms. Rose is gonna send in a plan, and she did. I don't know if there are any neighbors who weren't here last time who want to come at this time, Mary Ann.
Hi. Yeah, I wasn't able to come last week, so I just thought because I was a neighbor, I should come and see what the plan is. So that's, that's all, I'm just.
Great.
I know.
Jonathan, do you want to put it on screen? You want me to try to put it up on screen so people can see it?
I don't. I don't have.
All right, well. All right, well, just give me a moment, I should be able to do it. Jeanie, when did you send me the 60 brush hill plan?
Yesterday.
Yeah, I thought, that's what I thought, so why didn't, where did I find it?
Wait a minute, hold on, let me find it. I just sent it to you again.
All right, great, thanks. Sorry everyone for the delay. Ron and Jonathan, one of the issues the three of us were wrestling with were how we felt about sort of the gating factor of it being outside. Have you had any further thoughts about that one way or another? And then we were sort of going different directions on that.
Well. I guess that on reflection, I'm inclined to appreciate Ron's view of the situation. That the zoning bylaw really appears to be referring to interior uses of a building. On the other hand, the strict language of that section doesn't say that. It's really has to be read in context. Why don't we go, if we could go over the plan and see in here from the applicant. What is gonna occur and where it's gonna, where it's.
Okay, so what I'm hoping you're now seeing is the plan on my screen, hopefully at a relatively legible scale, can everybody see that?
Yeah, we don't see the whole thing.
Right, right, yeah, I can, you know. So that you can see the whole thing. Sorry?
Can you rotate it 90 degrees?
I'll be able to do that, let's see. There we go, better?
That's, that's better.
All right. All right, so it looks like. Obviously, I've got so many screens open now. Brush Hill Road's down here, obviously, and the main farm buildings are, are here. And if I'm reading the plan correctly, Ms. Rose, correct me, but it looks like your, your workout area and that climbing obstacle thing and the other workout area are right here, sort of. Is this a house?
Yeah, so this is a plan, this plot plan is of what structures were here before, not what are current. So the, where you're, yep, where you have the cursor, the, that's the stone building, if you drive by, that's that little.
I got it.
We saved that, so everything behind that is, oh no, actually, I said that wrong, right? So anyway, there's just the stone building there, that's where the original house was, which is gone now.
Okay, got it.
It's lawn.
Yeah, the stone building is here, I think, and that, that's the one you kept, right, right, right on the street.
No, that's, that's a little cottage down front.
Sorry.
That's okay, so the stone building is there, the house, the original house was attached to it, so there is still the stone building. But right in the middle here, where this, where I have the top arrow. Yes, that, that long skinny thing is gone, that was the old chicken coop.
Got it.
That is now all driveway back there, so the barn is right by the chicken coop, that's still there. And then the other structure is the three, it was the original three-car garage for the property, yep, those two structures are still there.
Okay, and, and so the, the, the climbing thing that people go over, that's somewhere in this area too?
No, that's way down on the property line, yep, way down there.
Way over there, I see, okay, so that's a long way from the road. And then, as you're running people around, you've obviously got a lovely big piece of property, they're running around here and not necessarily out by the street.
Uh, no, that, we're not down by the street at all, no. So that, yeah, the climbing thing, I mean, that was really for the kids, so I could not use that. But anyway, yeah, that's down, you know, towards the end of that property line, but it's not, I mean, you can see it from the road, but it's not on the road or anything like that.
Okay.
So, so there are two workout areas identified. And I think, I recall that you said you had essentially two types of activity, one that involved 10 or more people, and the other one that might involve one or two.
Right.
Are, are. Well, will both of those activities be in either or of the workout areas, or is one gonna be designated for the smaller group and one for the larger?
Um, not necessarily, I mean, I'd like to change it up because we have so much property, but when I'm doing, when I do one-on-one outside, if I'm outside at my house, then we would do it. We usually do it on the driveway where it's behind the stone building, between the stone building, the barn, and the three-car garage, that's a huge paved area. That would be, you can't see that from the road at all, you would never see anybody back there from the road. The other part where I have the arrow that says workout area, that's a grassy area in the front of the property. You know, that we might, that I've used before, so, so, okay, yeah, so that's the house, so if you zoom in.
So that's the, can we zoom in a little more?
Yep, because if you zoom in on the barn more and not the house, so the, so the structure's to the left, yep. So that's where you can see the barn is the top structure, to the left is the garage, and then the little stone building is in the front. So basically, where those cars are parked, that big area is paved, that's where a lot of, if I do private or semi-private outside, I would do it there. I do, you can get 15, 20 people there working out also, it's a huge area. So you wouldn't see that, but in front of the stone building between, like that little, yeah, up there, I've definitely have used that before. But, you know, if, if it's offensive to see people working out on a front lawn, then I guess I wouldn't do it there.
Well, maybe the term offensive is, is, is argumentative, and we might. Would, would it help Ron and/or Jonathan if, if they didn't use this front area and essentially they're using only areas that are effectively screened by the, the trees or this building? Or, I mean.
Yeah, it would help me.
Yes.
Okay. All right, and I know a number of the butters attended the last hearing, does anyone else have anything new to say about noise, or what they heard, or what they see, or what they don't see, or anything at all?
I have a question about. If it was a bigger group, the bigger group, where, is there a parking area, or? You know, my concern is just that it maintains the residential look to the neighborhood, the character, yeah, and, and I didn't realize that there, there could be up to 10 people, and it's the 10 cars I'm sort of thinking of. So I, I don't know what. Where the cars would park.
Well, I have a huge driveway in my house, a circular driveway could easily fit 20 cars on. I have had people park on the grass in front, I've had people park down by the tractors in the back, I mean, we have a ton of places to park cars.
It, the, the circular, is that the, the area behind the house with the big trees in the middle?
That's the front of the house, yes.
When you, you referred to a circular parking, or is that, is that it?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Yes, access to this house, I think, comes in off-screen, off, of course, broke up here.
Right.
And this is their front side, and this is their backside, I think.
And there's also a paved driveway between the upper part of the house and the barn, you can't see in this picture.
Goes under there, probably.
Correct.
Yeah, I had a question too, what do you, what do you do in inclement weather, do you just cancel, or do you?
Yeah, right now, we're not doing it at all.
Well, I mean, the summertime, it's raining hard or something.
Um, yeah, I've, I've canceled and just done it like on the Saturday, or just, actually, we had such a beautiful fall, like, I actually maybe canceled one. Because it was so nice, but I didn't start it until October, so we didn't do it in the summer at all.
Yeah. Well, there's, you know, there's some pretty nasty days in April and May sometimes, so.
Yeah, so some people don't care about working out outside and that, I haven't had to really deal with it yet, so.
Well, I think one of the things we were sort of moving towards last time, if we were gonna do this at all, was sort of a a trial basis with, with one class on Saturdays for up to 10 to 15 people. And, you know, how would you gentlemen feel about that, particularly if they weren't using this lawn area here, so it's all either effectively going on in here, back in the woods, or whatever?
Yeah.
It's still technically outside, but it's much more.
Well, it's, well, it is, it is screened from the street, from the road. I believe it is, pretty much.
Just come on. As I'm going through, like, four different systems, I can't drag the little guy there. So it's gonna be back behind here.
Yes.
Yeah.
I mean, it, it appears to be visually protected from what I can see, so.
Jonathan, what do you think?
I agree.
All right, well, let me, let me toss out to the group then that we, we think about a a special permit for, for a year for the, for the one Saturday, one class on Saturday, no more than 15 people. And that none of the activities take place closer to the road than essentially this line here. And, and, and then we see how it goes, because she'll be, you know, and hopefully what'll happen is, it'll be great. And the neighbors will say, we don't care, we never see it, we never hear it. And then we could think about expanding it if we wanted to, or, or, or not if we don't, but that would be sort of a in-between kind of trial basis.
But then, but then, but then I thought there was a request to have during the week, one or two people at a time, is that correct?
And you can, you, if you and Jonathan are comfortable, we could think about including that in this first round too, I'm just trying to come up with something that we can all be comfortable with, and.
Quick question. Hello?
Yes, ma'am.
Um. Your, the classes will be held between the back of the trees in front of the barn. Right, where, farther back from your area.
Where, where those cars are parked there.
Yeah, that, I think they, I think she's saying they might be in here, and they might be out, let me try to move this a little bit.
Might be in the woods.
Right, but, but some of it might be, might be in here, did I hear you right, Ms. Rose, yeah?
Yes.
Right. But it wouldn't be, under what we're talking about, it wouldn't be out in here.
Right, yeah, great.
From my perspective, I think that's a reasonable compromise, so.
And, and it would also have to be in compliance with all requirements of the Board of Health, they're gonna have a lot to say about, you know, until everybody's vaccinated, they'll probably have special handcuffs for you, and after everybody's vaccinated, lesser handcuffs for you. And you'll have to talk with them about how, who uses what restroom where and when.
Carrie Rose.
Right. Suzie, were you trying to say something on, on, on the, on the Rose application?
No.
Okay, thank you, nope, no worries. All right. You gents want me to take a stab at a, at a motion?
Yes, please.
All right, I move that we grant the petition for professional occupation under 3.25 of the zoning bylaw with the following conditions. One, that all requirements of the Sherburne Board of Health with respect to use of septic facilities and COVID-19 compliance be observed. Two. That there be only one class on Saturday. And that class be no more than 15 people. Three, smaller classes of one to two people could be Ron twice a week.
Well, I don't know, ask, ask the applicant.
Would twice a week be workable for, for a starter on this, for the weekday classes?
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, I'll take as many as you give me, I could fill it all five days with private lessons, but that's fine.
Well, why, why don't we start with, with two? Understanding that, that the term of this special permit's gonna be for a year, but I think we can write right into this special permit, the board's open to discussion on renewal of larger number of classes during, during the week. The locations of the exercise classes can't be any closer to the street than the southern edge of, is this the stone structure, is that the right way to describe it?
Yep.
Then the southern edge of the stone structure. And that's roughly 100 feet, 200 feet back? Whatever, we can, we can scale it off the plan, we, we'll be able to figure that out. Okay. And that's my motion. Going in board members, got additions, subtractions, edits?
No, no, I don't think so, I don't have any.
I would entertain a second then.
Second?
All right. Further discussion, or the commentary from any member of the public? Okay, hearing done. All in favor of the motion, say I will do it by roll call, no back votes, yes?
Stepek votes yes.
Pitch votes yes. Okay, that means there are no nays, and your permit is granted. And you're welcome to stay and join us for Coolidge Crossing tonight, and I know that's really fascinating and attractive, but if people choose not to do that, I will, will respect that choice.
Thank you very much.
All right, have a great day.
You too.
All right, Jeanie, do you think you got all that, and you can always look back on the tape and get it, right? Whoops. Well, she's using her hands, but I think she's saying yes. Okay.
Now, I'm unmuted, yes, I can do that.
Excellent, thank you very much, all right. All right, so everyone here who's assembled is probably here for the Coolidge Crossing hearing, which we legally will not start until 7:00, so anyone who wants to step away, have a bio break, whatever, but we're gonna be on, on hold until then, and Jeanie, we just leave this meeting open, right?
Meeting's open, so just like, stop your video and do what you have to do.
Right, the Zoom is open, the meeting on Coolidge Crossing is not yet open, we'll open it at 7:00, which would be nine minutes by my, by my clock.
Okay.
Gentlemen, thank you for the thoughtful consideration of the, of the Rose application, that one was not obvious to me at all. All right, at 7 o'clock, and this is the Sherburne Zoning Board of Appeals, it's January 28th, this is the continued hearing for the Coolidge Crossing Local Initiative Project under Chapter 40B. I might like to start tonight by asking if the development team could sort of work with me a little bit to strategize what we're gonna talk about tonight, it's been an awful lot of work that was done since we were last here. A lot of plans came in, a lot of peer reviews came in, a lot of responses to the peer reviews came in. The neighbors on Meadowbrook got together and submitted a letter with some of theirs views, and you know, subject to what the development team thinks, I think we've got a whole bunch of conversations back and forth on peer review on, near as I can tell, nine different topics, site plan, utility, lighting, amenities, building plantings, erosions, water, sewer, traffic, some of those discussions are very short. I imagine we're probably not gonna spend a lot of time talking about stormwater tonight, because last Friday you submitted your stormwater plans. And we thank you for those, but I'm betting that the cons come and other interested parties in town really haven't had a chance to react to them yet. We also have a lengthy letter from the Meadowbrook neighbors. Stephanie, I'm looking at you as I'm saying this, do you wanna take that up first, or do you wanna take, or do you wanna go through the, I mean, we have to pay the peer, peer reviewers. They're, they're wonderful people, but they're getting paid to be here. Do you wanna take them first, we're, we're open-minded.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Stephanie Kiefer from Smallock and Vaughn. We're actually very amenable to go with what is your preference. My suggestion, or my thoughts on how this evening would play out. The, the Meadowbrook neighbors' letter came in, I, I received it last night or this morning. I, I think that we would just provide an initial response at this point to that, if you want to hear that. But my suggestion probably is the bulk of the hearing this evening be be provided by Civil Design Group to walk the board through the, the full set of plans I was submitted on the 22nd. Potentially respond to and weave into responses with peer review. I recognize that the, the peer review response letters for traffic and civil were, were recently just submitted, so tech-to-tech likely has not had a, a chance to formulate that, but perhaps there may be an iterative sort of yes, this responds to our questions, what I see on the plan, and, and, you know, well, if there's further questions, once we review the full response, we will. And same with our traffic engineer, Bob Misha at MDM.
Okay. Fellow board members, that makes some sense to me, maybe we take an initial pass at, at a high level at some of the Meadowbrook stuff. It, it did just come in, I'm, I'm sure they're developing their thoughts, I'm sure the development team is developing their thoughts on responses, and so I think that door should stay open for further discussion. But maybe we can close up a bunch of doors on, on some of the design issues. Again, some of those, those documents came in today. And so it, you know, to the extent that any of the engineers on either side say, wait a second, we need to review X a little further, we need more detail on Y. I'm open-minded to, to doing that, does that make sense to the other board members?
Oh, yes, that's fine with me. Yes.
All right.
The Meadowbrook letter raises a, a number of issues in detail, that's gonna require some time to study and respond to.
Right, right. Having said that, Stephanie, if you wanna say a few words about the Meadowbrook letter on your own, I've, I've got a few thoughts of my own. We very much appreciate them getting together and putting it down to writing, it's gonna save a lot of people talking. But go ahead, you have the stage, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, good evening once again. So with response to the comment letter by the Meadowbrook Road residents, and, and again, addressing this at this point, just on a, on a high level, as you suggested. The, there seems to be a somewhat of a misunderstanding with their first request that they, they've made of the board, and they've asked the board specifically to review the Coolidge Crossing project together with Pulte's EA project at 104 Coolidge Street. Just procedurally, that's an impossibility. But, but first, somewhat substantively, I just wanna underscore that these are two separate parcels of land, there are two separate applicants, and they are two distinctly different projects. And most notably, just as to those two distinctly different projects. The project that's before you this evening at 8486 Coolidge Street is a 40B lip application. And so that means that this board is the approving authority pursuant to Chapter 40B of all local permits. In contrast, the Pulte proposal at 104 Coolidge Street is not before this board, it is under 40A zoning, under the EA zoning district, and that's being reviewed by the planning board. And so it's, it cannot be such that this board has jurisdiction over that project. Likewise, the planning board doesn't have jurisdiction over this project. And, and so I just want to clarify that from, from the get-go, I think that is probably clear, but just so we understand, we're dealing with two separate statutes and, and two separate jurisdictions within the town. The zoning board on this 40B project and the Pulte homes with the planning board under the EA zoning district. Otherwise, aside from that, there are some comments within the letter that I think, as we suggested, we'll get into further detail. There are certain concerns that they've raised with the general chemical, and, you know, we can look at that more closely later. Just a preliminary comment, though, their, their reference to the TRC letter of 2017 doesn't take into account things that have occurred to date, and my understanding, and again, this can be discussed later, if it's even applicable to this project, is that the DEP was gonna be undertaking response action. It was initially to go forward last spring, but now I believe it's this spring because of COVID, and it was 2.2 million-dollar project endeavor. And otherwise, I think that the, that the questions about well water and, and what those impacts are gonna do to manganese or the general chemical. Again, just as a reminder, this project is being proposed to use sewer and water from, from Framingham and Natick, and so there's not going to be, we're not proposing to have a draw right now, a further distinction from the, from the two 40B projects that are before the town. The North Main and the Hunting Lane projects that are referenced in the petitioner's letter to the board. This is a very different type of project, and, and so in addition to there being a discord between 104 and 8486 that the board can't review those two together. The, there's a inappropriateness, I guess, for lack of a better term, of the parallel they're seeking to draw with the the North Main Street and the Hunting Lane 40B projects, because those projects are sharing a common the North Main Street and the Hunting Lane 40B projects, because those projects are sharing a common well withdrawal and leaching field for their disposals and systems, as I understand. And so without belaboring the point and wanting to somewhat get into the the civil and the traffic presentation this evening and, you know, Tetra Tech here. If you don't mind, I'll conclude my statements on that letter at this time, unless you have any specific questions.
No, no, I think that's fair. I think we just want to sort of scratch the surface on that letter. One aspect of that letter, which I'm sympathetic to any non-lawyers in the Meadowbrook group is you may not know Stephanie, but in a prior proposal, which actually used the name Coolidge Crossing, there were two projects on these two sites that were owned by a common developer and had shared, all sorts of shared systems. So I think people not having your correct sensitivity to separate developers, separate projects, separate regimes might see it as the same situation. And you are right, legally they are not. But we can get into that more when we go to more of the letter. I think one thing the letter raises that is fair for your side to deal with is to the extent that you are doing blasting on your site, then manganese effects of that will be a legitimate subject for discussion. I don't know how much blasting you have to do. None would be a great answer, but it is what it is. But certainly, the fact that Pulte may blast up there is not something that I think we can legally lay at your feet under 40B. And I think the other thing I just want to touch on in this first round is the neighbors do raise the issue of large project. Your project, Stephanie, at over 120, at 120 units is over the large project threshold. But one of the things the board will have to decide is whether we want to assert the large project threshold, given that, as you pointed out, Stephanie, it's a local initiative project, a rental and supported by the town.
Right. And Mr. Chairman, on that point, if I may also refer you to the regulations, if the board were to point to this as a large project, raising issue with it, it was required within 15 days of opening the public hearing.
Right.
You know, but admittedly, it's a 120 unit project, obviously, but the provisions as to what a large project really means in terms of if the board can deny it outright, that is no longer an issue before us. So just to underscore that.
Right, we could, we could, we could have an interesting academic debate on that, but there's no need to. So having said that, on the Meadowbrook petition for now, if there's anyone who has something very brief to say on the Meadowbrook petition, I think we might hear you for a minute or two, but mostly I think we're going to move that down the road because it just landed and the development team wants a chance to give it a meaningful response. I think Mr. Thompson is on mute.
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to, in one minute, clarify.
Can you just ID yourself and where you live, please?
Sorry, I'm Jean Woodamire.
Oh, Jean, you said the letter. Great, thank you.
I'm not John Thompson. But this is John Thompson. I just wanted to clarify that there isn't any misunderstanding that these are two projects under or separate boards within the town. The point was that you, I don't see, they're next to each other. They go hand in hand. It's, I I just think blasting can't be A plus B and OC, you know, that we never thought of that. I just I think that's, that's the point. I do understand that there's a procedural nicety that one is in front of one board and one is in front of the other.
Right. In the same way that, you know, you can't be arrested for noise that your neighbor makes at their house. There is some separateness involved, but many of the issues in the letter are completely legitimate ones that do need to be dealt with. And I think that the development team is going to give a measured and appropriate response. Okay. Having, and thank you, thank you for writing. All right, having said that, development team, how do you want to move through? Do you want to sort of track the civil design letter of the 28th, which sort of goes through Q and A and Q and A? What's your, what's your pleasure here?
Well, I'll jump in for Roy. The, what we were thinking is kind of presenting and walking through the newly presented plans and just kind of walking the board through that, as well as go through some of the traffic. I believe the traffic consultants have had a chance to go back and forth a little bit and walk you through kind of our responses to the peer review comments. If that's okay with you.
Right. Steve, that sounds okay with me. Is that, does that work for Tetra Tech? Yep, yeah.
Okay.
Yes. All right. Todd, you got the floor. Go.
Well, I'll hand the floor over to Matt to start, I believe. And Matt, if you want to take it from here, I can pull up some plans if you like, or if you want to share your screen.
Yep. If you can share your screen, you guys are surely better at it than I am. You can't help trying to muddle through.
Good evening, board members. Matt Leiden with Civil Design Group, civil engineer for the project. And so I'll give a kind of a overview of the full engineering design that was just submitted. And understandably, the information is fairly new. There's additional peer review that will undergo. But we thought it might be helpful just to give an overview, and we're certainly prepared to talk in more detail and respond to further questions at the next meeting. So I'll start by sharing my screen here. And I thought I'd really focus mostly on the stormwater design because that's really the bulk of the additional information that was submitted. So we, in this most recent submission, we took the initial site layout plan, and we had, because at that time, at the initial submission, we had conceptual kind of high level stormwater and utility plans that were included. And now after the first couple of hearings on this project, we've now advanced the plan to a complete, fully engineered site plan set. And that's what was submitted most recently. And again, the biggest kind of, you know, increase or supplemental information that's been incorporated into the set really revolves around stormwater. That's a subject or one of the subjects of the peer review. So I thought I'd focus on that tonight and kind of give an overview and be prepared at the next meeting to continue that discussion. So the design, I'm sharing here the grading and drainage plan, which is just one of the sheets of the set that was submitted. Probably the most relevant to what I'm about to talk about, but I'll flip to any others depending on any questions that come up.
Matt, as you're doing it, if you'd be relatively summary on the new stormwater, because that's it hasn't really been reviewed or responded to by the town, and what we're hoping to do is try to narrow down the areas on some of what we've done in the past. So please proceed, but briefly.
Absolutely. Thank you. So in selecting the BMPs or best management practices for the site, we need to take into account every site is unique, has its own set of parameters and challenges and considerations. And, you know, so some of the major things we take into account here and we did with the site are the existing topography, harmonizing with the existing terrain, existing drainage patterns, the location of existing wetlands, all which is, you know, highly detailed in this plan set. Looking at the land coverage types between what's existing out there and what's proposed. Of course, there's a lot more impervious area in the proposed condition than the existing, which is just a basically a single family house and a driveway. So that plays a large role in what we propose for stormwater. We did an extensive subsurface evaluation of the soils as well as seasonal high groundwater and ledge throughout the site. We have many test pits that were evaluated. And all that information is documented in this most recent submission. And I might add that in addition to the planned set, a detailed and comprehensive stormwater report was submitted in this most recent round with this planned set. So that information is all documented between these plans and that stormwater report. We look at runoff toward the abutting properties. In this particular case, there's actually run, what we call run on. So there's water from abutting properties that runs onto this site, and we need to take that into account in the proposed condition and how we deal with that. So, you know, looking at all that information, and again, we could talk in more detail at the next meeting. We selected BMPs, again, best management practices for the stormwater that will collect the stormwater, pretreat all the stormwater, and then introduce that stormwater into infiltration system. So we're fortunate in the sense that the soils on the site are very good in terms of their texture or their classification. There's a lot of sandy soils on this site. But we also have to consider there is relatively shallow groundwater on the site, and that comes into play and again, factored into the design, which is all documented in our stormwater report. So we, you know, we need to address the stormwater quality. So again, we pretreat and then we infiltrate to meet the water quality standards, also the quantity. So looking at the rate of runoff leaving the site at the various study points where water does leave the site. And so based on the amount of impervious area and just the change in the land coverage types that we're introducing to this project, we are extensively using infiltration BMPs throughout the site. So we have some superficial basins, sort of shallow, large footprint basins that collect the pretreated water and then infiltrate it, which are kind of scattered throughout the site as well as some subsurface systems. So we have some systems under parking lots that infiltrate as well in proximity to the buildings to handle some of the rooftop runoff. So it's a very decentralized, if you will, stormwater system, which is typically favored as opposed to one sort of large centralized stormwater management area. So we're dispersing that stormwater throughout the project area and really you know, making, making the proposed condition or creating a proposed condition, which very well replicates what happens today in terms of runoff patterns and infiltration and runoff quantity as well. So again, that's all in this most recent submission between the plans and the stormwater report. We did receive the initial peer review letter from Tetra Tech. And I will say that our submission of the full set of design plans and that peer review letter sort of crossed paths. And so while we did submit a formal response, written response to that peer review today, I will say that much of or many of the comments will be addressed just in the fact that we've now submitted this, this full design plan. So many of the comments requested this level of detail that's now been submitted. So that in itself will address many of the comments. And then our written responses today will also go ahead and address the comments, the remaining comments. And I do expect now that we've submitted all this additional information, that Tetra Tech may have additional questions or comments, and we're certainly happy to address those if and as they arise through this process. But again, wanted to give the board an overview of the project in terms of the stormwater and kind of introduce everybody to it. And at this point, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have on this plan set and
Well, yeah.
Turn it over to Bob Mieschow at MDM to address some of the traffic comments that came up.
Okay. Well, so let's, before we leave this, thank you for that overview. Tetra Tech, I'm sure you'll want to speak for yourselves on what you're happy about and what you're not happy about. We look forward to hearing your comments. I know the conscom will probably have something to say about this. We don't have their comments. But we will, we will hear more from all sorts of people on this, this, obviously carefully done design, and we'll let them speak for themselves.
I just want to add to Matt's comments that, as you know, all these buildings are slab on gray. They don't have basements, so we are not going down deep. We don't anticipate having to blast. Doesn't mean we won't have some utilities or something come up that would require it, but if we don't anticipate it, if it does occur, we would definitely go through the process with the Board of Health, Fire Department, and whatever that would require.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you. Obviously, it's becoming, as you can tell from the correspondence, a more and more of a sensitive issue in the community where you won't be on wells, but the rest of us are. So. Okay. Are we ready to turn to the January 28th back and forth? Is that the best way to tackle this next, Matt?
We're certainly willing to do that. I, I'm, I guess I'll go with whatever, you know, the board feels is the best.
It may help if I just said a few words real quick. So just first and foremost, I gotta compliment the design team. Steve and I see a lot of plans. We see a lot of documentation on projects like this, and the work Matt and his team did, really well done. Even the initial plans, which were missing a lot of information, very well organized, very well thought. So it was a good omen for what we're going to see in the future. Now, we did get a chance to take a look at everything they sent over because we knew we had the meeting tonight. And to Matt's point, everything looks to be in order. The documentation is comprehensive. The solutions look really good. Yeah, it's a very tight site, so we need to look at the detail that's been submitted, but right now, very impressed with what they came up with. It looks to be on point. So all indications are pretty positive. We do have some sort of, sort of comments that are hanging out there a bit, but they're more contextual comments than really, really substantive disagreements on design. But just before we go further, I just wanted to make sure that that was, put people's minds at ease, that they're certainly trending in the right direction.
That's hugely helpful to hear. Thank you. If I were to put you on the spot and say, you know, what are your three biggest areas of discomfort based on the January 28th letter? Would you be able to answer that question, or would you refuse to answer?
No, no, I think, I think our, probably our biggest concern right now is, is just, there's not much room left on the site. So, you know, that's the mark of a good designer. That's the mark of a good developer. But what it does do is it puts a lot of pressure on getting everything right, because there's really no space left over, so we can't afford to make any mistakes. That's probably the biggest takeaway for now, like very densely developed. One little thing that sort of bugs Steve and I is the location of the sewer pump station a bit close to the one neighbor. So if we could find a little bit more sensitive location for that, that would probably be a good thing. And then I think our other bigger concern is sort of the reliance on the improvements that are happening in another project and how that how that relates to this project. So if they're relying on another project for other means of access or connection to water or sewer, you know, that creates a layer of complexity that's not typically on a project that we got to be careful about.
Okay, thank you. That's enormously helpful. We'll look forward to your follow-up letter that says you love everything they've done except X and Y and Z.
Exactly what it'll be.
Or however many letters there are in the alphabet. And it does raise a point I meant to pass on in the, in the neighbor's letter, which is I don't want people to misunderstand. I think, Todd, that it's correct that your project can't go ahead unless Pulte does because you need your water and sewer through his site. But presumably, his project could go ahead without you, couldn't it? Or would it just be unaffordable for him to get his water and sewer?
I'm not clear on that. I don't want to speak for them.
Okay.
I'm not sure.
Okay, fair enough. So the answer is the projects are somewhat interdependent as a practical matter. Would that be a fair statement?
Yeah, of course. You can't build any project without water and sewer, so it's certainly needed for the development.
Well, we feel strongly about it, but. Okay. Peer review design team, are we ready then, as the applicant suggests, to turn to traffic for tonight?
So unless you need anything else from us.
I don't think so. I guess I probably, I don't know if there are members of the public who've had a chance to go through the January 28th letter. It did just arrive today at 2:00. So if people haven't had a chance to go through, we definitely understand and respect that. But if people have had a chance and do have questions. But if people have had a chance and do have questions about it, maybe now might be a good time to raise them just before we move on into traffic. Mr. Lesser.
Hi, Michael Lesser, 54 Forest Street. To the peer review, I I guess it's might be an obvious answer, but in your first letter, you had concerns about whether there's adequate soil testing and data for that to to judge the the stormwater system, which would obviously possibly create some significant changes. In your first review, is that can I presume that you feel like there's probably the right soil testing data sufficient to review it all?
Yeah, they did quite a bit of additional testing. So in the in the original letter or the original seminal, we had none. And as you can imagine, the site's really tight, so very sensitive to any unforeseen circumstances. So they did a pretty comprehensive soil testing program, had to be, say, almost 35 borings or 35 test pits. Really good coverage of the site, gave a good representative understanding of of the soils out there. Also, all at least one test in every one of the infiltration systems. So so we've got a fundamentally different basis of information now than we did originally.
Okay, now it's just concerned whether it might drive more dramatic changes, but we'll see what you find when you look at it.
To your to your point, we we thought it would, but that's why I wanted to take a look at the information that was submitted the other day and and see what they came up with and how well they addressed the the questions and they appear to have addressed them really completely.
Okay, thank you.
All right, other questions and other non-traffic questions and comments from the board at this time? Or from sorry, from non-board members at this time? Board members, any comments on where we are so far or where this should go or should we look to move on to traffic?
I think we've covered the the site as well as we can tonight. Be well, ready to go on to traffic.
Jonathan?
Rick, can I make a comment?
Yes, Mr. Morale.
Hi, George Morale, Levin Whitney Drive, just one, and I'm a member of the select board. One comment I just wanted to bring up in regards to the Meadowbrook letter that I did read a copy of is the fact that the select board will be negotiating an IMA with the town of Framingham when it comes to the water. And one of the items that I'm adamant about including in that IMA is the fact that if there is problems with wells on Meadowbrook from the general chemical plume or something that happens in the future, that those met those how homes on Meadowbrook would be able to hook up to the water.
That's enormously helpful to hear. Is it clear to you that that'll be acceptable to the other parties to the IMA?
I I'm not sure yet, but I think, you know, as a they're dealing with general chemical as well. But at the I think there's a total of 13 or 14 homes on Meadowbrook and there's homes along Coolidge as well. And I think with without, I mean, without, just think of it this way, with a water line there, there's an easy solution if there's a problem with wells. Without a water line there, there is not an easy solution if there's a problem with their wells. So this actually could be very helpful to have a water line running by Meadowbrook Road. If there becomes a problem in the future.
Okay, very, very helpful. Thank you for speaking up. Anyone else have something to raise? It doesn't have to be as helpful as what George brought up.
Well, related to what George brought up, who would pay for that water? If there was a hookup on Meadowbrook, I mean, would they be entering the water district there and have to pay the same rate based on usage?
That looks like Frank Jenkins speaking, right?
Yes.
Okay. George, do we know?
I have no idea on that, Frank. That's something that would have to be negotiated in the IMA because
I think it should be.
The town of Sherburne would not own those lines.
Right.
It that it would be owned by the private developers. So so it's something that will have to be discussed between the development, between the city of Framingham, the town of Sherburne and the developers.
Yes.
Okay. Seeing no other hands or people wishing to speak. Michael Lesser again.
Since you got into the water stuff, I don't know what your full agenda is on the water thing, whether you're part of that issue is the point in the letter for the peer review about whether the water from Framingham will allow for irrigation. I saw in the file that they want to have that. And so there's clearly an issue just because there are some significant, I think, restrictions, if not a prohibition of irrigation wells in in Sherburne that has to get worked out as part of it. That's part of the maybe needs to probably brought into the water negotiations. But that's just one other little tidbit there. And I'll change topic to see whether, I'm not sure where in this meeting it fits in, whether we can get, I'll just speak as a conservation commissioner. In this case of when there, if there's any information about filing of an NOI or something like that for dealing with the Wetlands Protection Act. Or where that comes later, you can decide.
Timing, that's perfectly fair question now, Todd.
Sorry, we are pulling together the documentation right now. We just requested the butter's list to file the NOI in the next week or so.
So okay. Just just helps with our scheduling.
Yes, so hopefully we'll get that filed next week.
Yeah, to the extent that whatever advanced warnings you can give about what's happening, that helps because we see a large effort or a large project. So the more of them, this just to keep us appraised so that so that we're better prepared.
I will. I'll have to talk with Matt Leidner about that after when we'll be ready to file it.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thought I saw Marian Neutra on there. I know that the planning board sent in a letter. Did you want us to? But I but I don't think we have a live planning board issues on this site. Have that correct?
The only issue that I found in the the latest, I would say, the peer review report that I read, and I don't know if it was the very latest one, was regarding the the bus stop turnout that the planning board had requested. And the the peer reviewer rightly pointed out that school bus, school buses legally and by preference, stop on the main road and don't need to turn out, which is true. We considered the turnout still important for MWR TA buses that we hope we're hoping will serve this development and the neighboring Pulte development. So the peer reviewer suggested that that turnout was not was not necessary. And I'd like to just tentatively disagree on that until we discuss it more.
Mr. Chair, if I could speak to that?
Please.
We have a plan that shows the bus turnout and we went over that with the bus company to make sure it's of sufficient size and turning radiuses. And our only comment is that we will build that if the MWR TA wants it, but we'd like to not build it if they're not going to use it.
And that will be in part of our traffic presentation.
All right, great. Live issue, we'll deal with it as part of traffic.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Marian. Okay. I think we're ready to move on to traffic. African team, is that is that is that Mr. Mashad?
Yes, it is. Thank you from Mr. Chair, board members. My name is Robert Micho, a managing principal of MDM Transportation Consultants. What I like to do is do share screen and do a very brief presentation on some of the responses that we've got to the Tetra Tech review. We were pleased with the review. We think it was a very clean and professional review. There aren't a whole lot of substantive issues really to to address. But the ones that need clarification are certainly important. So what I like to do is first start with what we we see as the most significant comment. And it relates to the driveway sightlines in our original traffic report. And on the basis of the originally submitted site plan, we had identified that the minimum required safety criteria for sightlines would in fact be met for for the design as it existed at that time. And we still stand by that, that any of the proposed sightlines for the driveway would meet or exceed the applicable minimum criteria that are recommend recommended by the American Association of State Highway and Transportation Officials, ASHTO. Now, since the filing of the original site plan and Matt Leidner had presented the latest version of that site plan, there have been some modification features that include, for instance, the MWR TA bus turnaround as one feature. The associated bus shelter, to the extent that's actually built, and some grading areas along the frontage of the property that relate to the drainage analysis and modifications that that Matt Liner had had pointed out. So we know that having looked at that updated site plan, that there are potentially some aspects of the grading along the frontage, particularly as it relates to the retention pond along the frontage that may need to be modified slightly to meet a higher standard, not 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 just the minimum standard, but the higher standard of what's known as intersection site distance, which is the nature of what Tetra Tech's comment related to. And just so that the board is clear on what that means is that there are two standards for sightline. There's the the standard that relates to the ability for a vehicle to perceive and stop before it comes into conflict with another. That's known as stopping site distance. That's really the minimum standard that needs to be met. And there's also the intersection site distance standard, which really is a standard that is a desirable standard from the perspective of facilitating or enhancing traffic operations, right? So I'll step through how we're intending to meet that higher standard, which is more of an enhancement rather than necessarily a safety issue. And what we've got here in this slide is a representation of what those sightlines look like based on the current site plan, the recently submitted site plan. And you'll see in this diagram, a vehicle in a stopped position on its approach to Coolidge Street.
Can you zoom that just a little bit for all of us, please?
Sure, let me let me see how.
Only if you can do so easily.
Yeah. I'm in presentation mode, so I'll have to, if you bear with me, okay. Let me do this. Is that better?
Yes, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, go ahead.
So what this shows is the vehicle in a stopped position at the driveway. And looking to the left or on this screenshot, the right side of the diagram, you'll see that 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 blue line, that blue dash line represents the visit, the sightline that a driver would have to an oncoming vehicle traveling along Coolidge Street. And what it shows as well along that sightline is where that sightline would cross over various elements of the site. In particular, the bus turnaround, the detention pond here that's central to the frontage area and some of the grading that's associated with the updated site plan. Might recall that the original site plan had a retaining wall of sorts near what we're showing to be Station Three or in this general vicinity. That's been eliminated in place of grading. So we've we've looked at the profile, the ground profile of that sightline, which is shown below in this diagram in a darker dashed black outline. And it shows in one area of that sightline, a portion of the detention pond that actually has a lip on it, if you will, or a slightly higher elevation that would impede your ability to see all the way to where the oncoming vehicles is shown in this diagram. We also show in this profile, the lower portion of the diagram, a red line that would indicate that there is the ability to regrade or even reposition that drainage feature on the site plan. And I know, and and I have talked about this in a way that would allow for an unimpeded sightline to that approaching vehicle. So there's a little bit of work that would need to be done, not substantial amount of work, but some work that would need to be done within the sightline shown in this diagram so that it would have full visibility to that oncoming vehicle. But what I want to stress is that while that's relatively easily solved issue, the site design, as it's currently been resubmitted, does meet the minimum safety based criteria of stopping site distance. And if I turn the board's attention to this table, what I would like to emphasize is that when you measure the actual available intersection site distance along the lines that I just showed in that diagram, looking to the east or to the left as you're you're leaving the driveway, we anticipate that we can achieve at least 380 feet of sightline or travel distance between an approaching vehicle and a vehicle leaving the driveway. Now, the ASHTO minimum criteria based on the 85th percentile travel speeds, which is 44 miles an hour on Coolidge Street, would be 350 feet. So we easily meet that standard. And in fact, I believe we meet that standard even without any adjustment to the drainage feature that I mentioned. The higher standard here is that what what is known as the ideal intersection site distance. And that again relates to whether a vehicle approaching a driveway would need to slow down at all and and perhaps inconvenience themselves by slowing down to allow that vehicle to accelerate from a stop position. Based on the regulatory speed limits, 35 miles an hour along the stretch of road, that ideal distance really only has to be 335 feet. At 380 feet, which we we know we can achieve, we could accommodate an ideal intersection stopping distance for speeds of up to 40 miles an hour, which is, in our view, certainly an enhancement and we believe can be achieved. Looking to the west, we have really no issue there. There is not the same roadway curvature that would in any way impede the sightline either for stopping site distance or intersection site distance. And so it's available ISD is well above what the ideal standards would be under ASHTO. So the conclusion here is that the the higher standard of ISD can be achieved here for the regulatory speed limits. And I know that the review consultant had indicated that perhaps it would be a nice thing to 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 even meet the 44 mile an hour, 85th percentile speed for ideal ASHTO criteria. We don't believe that that's necessarily appropriate. We we don't want to design for for convenience purposes an accommodation for a vehicle that's traveling 10 miles above the speed limit and has to slow down by 10 miles an hour to allow that vehicle to leave. We think it's appropriate that we certainly can can meet the 40 mile an hour standard. So that's that's our response, really left to making some relatively modest changes to the grading on the site, which will be forthcoming in the coming days from Matt Leidner's office.
Okay, so just just before we move too far past that, I know the board will want Tetra Tech. Sorry, the board will want Tetra Tech to to react. Because if their view agrees with yours, that that's helpful. And if they disagree, then then that's what we're all here for. One thing that leaps out to me as a non-traffic engineer is if there is a vehicle in that bus turnaround, Luke, your sightlines go to heck, right?
Well, not necessarily, because the stopped position of a bus would be outside of the site triangle itself.
Okay.
And and the occasion in which that would happen would be so occasional that it would not likely present any issue for for someone leaving the driveway. So to the extent a bus were were pulling out, I think there would be a period, very short, brief duration in which someone, whoever got to that turning position first, would probably make that turn first. So the bus, if it were attempting to make a turn at the same time a vehicle exiting the driveway were making the same turn, I would I would guess that that bus would probably proceed on the basis that the vehicle couldn't really see around that bus as as it would be in the stop position and it would simply be a matter of waiting 10 or 15 seconds to to wait for the bus to to move.
We'll hear from Tetra Tech on that and I won't say anything further.
Yeah, to Rob's point that you're usually we're more concerned about fixed objects when it comes to site distance.
Yeah, to, to Rob's point that you're usually, we're more concerned about fixed objects when it comes to site distances than, than moving objects. But I think everything that Rob said is, is accurate. Clearly, the, looking to the east is the more problematic side. The big thing we want to do is just make sure that everybody understands that you know, there's a lot of things that can go on in the space that the sightline looks through. And what we want to do is make sure that that area stays clear. A lot of our comments are really more about awareness than about any particular concern. I think Rob puts it accurately that, that they're, they're almost to the, the highest standard for a site distance. So it's just a matter of us looking at the detail and confirming that that's reasonable. Another important thing to keep in mind is the, the, the shape of the, the road as it approaches from the east is you're down in a little hole at the end. And then you're rising up. So there is some mitigation on speed and, and braking because they're coming uphill. So there's some, there's a lot of nuance to that, but I think what Robert said is pretty accurate.
Excuse me, what happens to this analysis if a car is traveling at 50 miles an hour?
Five zero?
Five zero.
So not unheard of speed on Coolidge Street.
Yeah. And then that's, it's important too, that using the 85th percentile is sometimes a point of argument with consultants as well. You know, I'll have people argue with us that it, well, it should be the traffic speed. Well, or the posted speed is as well, very few people drive the posted speed, but the 85th percentile is the recognized standard for the number that you use in such applications. Question, every additional mile per hour is additional distance required to react? So you know, whether it's an additional 10 feet or 15 feet, that, that could be calculated by, by the design team, but it would just basically, you, you need a little bit longer time and a little bit longer distance. Did that answer your question, Jonathan?
Well, I think so. I'm just, I'm just wondering what, what happens to the probability of some kind of incident if a car is coming at 50 or even 60 miles an hour down Coolidge Street.
Well, the appropriate, in that case, you'd probably want to be using the site, the, the stopping site distance criteria as opposed to the intersection site distance criteria, but Robert, you guys could certainly for, as an exercise, maybe just do a couple test runs and tell us what the, the distances would be for those.
Yeah, we could certainly provide what the highest speed would be that would accommodate the stopping site distance criteria.
Okay.
It would certainly be more than 44 miles an hour. We know that distance is 350 feet. And, and you know, so my guess without doing a formal calculation is that we're probably close to 50 miles an hour to, to meet that standard. I will say that the standards here, which are well-recognized are based on the 85th percentile speeds. And it's not to say that, that 15% of other traveling population, you know, doesn't, you know, doesn't, doesn't speed, they, they do. But to try to design to those standards would, would not be appropriate. And quite frankly, anyone who's traveling at that speed is probably endangering many people. Unfortunately, it's not something that we can necessarily design to. That, that becomes an enforcement issue.
And Jonathan, another important consideration is, is stopping site distance is to come to a complete stop. So you figure, you know, if someone's traveling at a higher rate of speed, they can either slow down enough to, to evade the person or, or take other measures that lessen the, the, the likelihood that there's an accident or significant accident.
Okay. Well, that's, that's helpful. I understand.
Thank you. So with that, what I'd also like to do is just acknowledge that to the extent there are any trees or other features like the bus shelter or signs or anything else that are, are within that so-called sightline triangle that they will be inventoried and accounted for and either removed or replaced as necessary to ensure that there are unimpeded sightlines and visibility within that sightline triangle. So that's not so much of an issue. In fact, we know that the shelter has already been shifted to a location that is outside of that zone. The signs, you know, for the development to the extent there are anywhere near there would be placed in a way that again, does not impede the visibility. And I know that the applicant has gone out and taken some pictures just to refresh the board on some of the trees that currently exist. This is a picture of the vicinity where the driveway will be built. And obviously any trees in this photo will be removed as a function of building that driveway. So there's no issue there. And as we look to the east, we, we see that there are other trees, there, there aren't a whole lot of them, but they're, they're there. And those trees will either be removed or replaced or perhaps in very select instances retained, but trimmed in a way that does not impede the visibility to any, any oncoming vehicle. And in fact, most recently, as we look at the tree in this picture to the far right of the picture near the utility pool, that, that, that particular tree has already been cut. You know, so now it still needs to be stumped, but that, that's, those types of impediments, if you will, to visibility will be removed. So there's really no issue in terms of the trees, but they will be inventoried, shown on the plan and accounted for to ensure that nothing within that site triangle is creating, creating.
Interrupt to say that that was Eversource who cut that down and not us.
And as of today, it's cut all the way to the ground.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
All right. And, and, and it was a tree killed by the gypsy moss, not Eversource nor the developer.
Right. As we turn our attention to the bus stop, so to speak, it's correctly noted that that was never intended to serve as a school bus pullout. Our recommendation, in fact, standard practice is for school buses to stop in the travel way. That's where the best enforcement visibility to that stop vehicle, along with its flashing stop arms is, it's the safest position from the perspective of school children that access that bus or across the street. So this really was exclusively meant to be an exercise to address the potential for MWR TA to have a so-called bus turnaround. Should, should they need one, you'll see that the originally submitted plan originally had a cutout, if you will, for bus stop, but, but that has been modified by MDM to show more of a a semi-circular element to accommodate that shuttle bus. Presumably that, that may not even be built. It's really a function of whether MWR TA wants to provide access to the site. And finally, let's see, oh, the final issue, and it's a fairly inconsequential one. And I'm going to go back to presentation mode just for a second. It's easier. Is that the College Street and North Main Street modeling, while it shows that there's very little impact from the project itself. In fact, the, the project impacts at that location, which is to the east of the property. They're really immaterial. It's a very, very small percentage of the overall volume that uses that intersection that the operational analysis was questioned in the, in the review and that that's a single lane approach to North Main Street. And, and they questioned the, the modeling that we had that assumed that there were separate left and right turn lanes. And really, there's a very simple explanation in that this is the, the incremental traffic that was presented in the traffic report. It shows on the right side, side of the screen here, the number of trips that would be generated during a weekday morning peak hour of, of the more than 1,500 cars an hour that use that intersection. There would be about seven trips to or from the north on Route 27. Only a handful of left turns in the morning and 12 to the south. So very, very small numbers and in the evening, very similar results. And you could see that as you focus on that eastbound approach to North Main Street, Route 27, most of the volume is actually making a right turn. There are very few left turns happening there. But nonetheless, if you look at the video of this, you'll see that that approach actually accommodates left turn movement vehicles and allows for right turn vehicles to bypass in what would essentially be their own lane, right? So this actual operation is what we modeled within the context of our technical analysis. So what was originally submitted in, in, in our report, we, we, we stand by, we don't see that there's a cause or a need to adjust it. But really that wasn't a very substantive comment to address to begin with. You know, this, this is not a high, highly impacted location. With that, you know, we look forward to continuing to work with Tetra Tech to make sure that all of these comments have been properly addressed. There will be some forthcoming information on the updated site plan as it relates to grading to ensure that we're meeting those applicable standards. And that's all I have.
All right. Very clear and extremely helpful. Thank you. Tetra Tech, obviously we'll look forward to your, yes, we agree, no, we don't. Here's where we disagree responses.
And again, we've had a chance to look at, at the responses that we got today and everything looks in line. I, I think we covered the intersection and stopping site distance issue pretty well. I guess the only thing I'd add maybe is that that, that intersection is, is an F, I guess it's in the morning. And, and they're adding traffic to it. And I'm wondering whether or not maybe there's some striping improvements or things like that that might clarify that lane configuration enough so that you know, it, it helps the situation a little bit. I'll, I'll leave that up to the design team to see if that's worth considering. But given that people are using it a particular way, that maybe it's not a bad idea to, to reinforce the proper use of that intersection. So it functions the way the model expects it to function. And it's not a very costly improvement and it might help just give people a little bit more order at that, at that intersection.
Great, thank you. Annie Mae Weiss, I think I saw you on, does CMD have any immediate reaction to that or do you just want to say what shakes out?
Sorry. Yeah, no, I, I mean, I think it sounds good. I think, I know as a whole, we, everyone's been looking at the, you know, line painting and, and route. So I think it's a good idea. We'll definitely note it and yeah, take it where we can do, you know, if there's something that can be done to make that intersection work better, it's noted.
All right. Thank you. Go back to your family. Sorry to interrupt.
Mr. Chair, Roy McDowell, if I could bring up an issue?
Yes, Mr. McDowell.
Todd, could you please put up the site plan showing building one on the south side?
I'm sure I'll just bring it, open it up one second.
While we're waiting for that, could I make a quick comment on that bus turnaround?
Yes, go ahead, Marian. Are you, are you wearing your citizen hat or your planning board chair hat?
My planning board chair hat.
Please proceed.
Yeah, Marian Neutro 25 Prospect Street Planning Board. Just thinking ahead, MWR TA may or may not decide to put a bus to service that development with a bus now, especially with them cutting back on service in general during COVID-19. But I think you might consider the possibility that it could be added in the future and it would be, might be useful if it's easy to do to have that turnaround in place because we don't know whether 10 years down the road or 20 years down the road, people are going to want bus service there.
Okay. Tetra Tech, take that, take that into consideration in your recommendations, please.
Really? Do you want to mention the site?
Yes, Todd, did you go blow that plan up a little bit and just focus in on the parking area on the south side? The, the thing I wanted to bring up to the, the board is per their recommendation a, a while back, there was a concern that you felt you didn't like the retaining wall in the parking being so close to the street. I'll wait till Todd moves the plan.
I'm trying to scroll. It's a big PDF. That's a little slow. Hopefully it picked up speed.
Glad to see the computers being rebellious to somebody other than me. It's very reassuring.
And you know, it's going to go right past where you wanted it to stop, right?
I know.
Of course.
I'm hoping. All right, that should get you what you need to see.
Give me a little bit more. There we go. So originally, it was actually a good observation on the part of the, the ZBA. We had the parking lot closer to the street. See the cars more from the street and we had a retaining wall there, which possibly could have been an issue with the sightline. So what we did, we had our engineers look at this, we shifted the entire parking back probably about 30 feet. And by moving the whole parking back 30 feet, it allowed us to make a more gentle slope, not requiring a retaining wall. So two things, one, the retaining wall has been eliminated and two, the vehicles are further back from the street. So we just want to let you know that your recommendation, we made that change.
Great. Thank you.
Hey, Roy, I have a quick question. There's kind of a cool stone wall there that retains the slope of the roadway. Is that staying?
I believe so. Yes, there is an opening for Eversource with a gate to get in. So obviously that'll have to stay, but we'd have no reason to remove the retaining wall. It's somewhat of a freestanding farm wall, if you will.
Yeah.
That's really it. I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Thank you. Thank, thank you for doing that and thank you for bringing it up. And, and if it, if it comes up in the course of the wetlands review that that parking is too close, you can say, well, wait a second, we were asked to move it there.
Thank you.
Okay. Other thoughts, comments on traffic before we move to sort of other, other business? Sean, it sounds like you and Steve are going to take a look at what you got from MDM, digest it, get back to us with a, what's hopefully going to be a very short follow-up letter saying, yeah, they fixed it. No, they didn't. Here's what we agree, just the same as with everything else.
Yeah, I, I think that's an accurate assessment.
Great. Thank you very much. We appreciate that. And if other people with, with expertise or knowledge of traffic matters disagree with that, we're not required to listen to the peer reviewers. We generally tend to refer to them as subject matter experts, but sometimes it turns out someone in town is a traffic engineer on the side and they've got something to say. Okay, definitely not me. All right. Should we talk a little bit about next time, next steps? Where we go from here? I'm looking at you, Stephanie, as I'm, as I'm asking that question. Michael Lesser, hold on. Michael, what's your concern?
I want, I had a few comments that I forgot to offer about, ask about the site before you, since you seem to be moving on to the next meeting, whether I could just make a, some questions on the site thing to before.
I think those are perfectly reasonable.
Okay.
Because, because, because nothing's closed up.
I just wanted to get some, a little bit of input. It's a little looking ahead possibly for the wetlands analysis and the NOI. And also to get some feedback maybe ahead of time on that sort of issues that we don't normally see. In the peer review report, they talked about how the number of parking spots is beyond the minimum as well as the size of the parking spots. I guess, I guess it seems to be that the peer review is corrected in the sense that there is a 20-foot length for parking spots, whereas the first letter of the peer review talked that that was maybe longer than needed. But I'll just ask whether in both cases, given the amount of, of buffers, buffer of to the wetlands, that's, I could see that's being taken up by development in this case, whether there's some information ahead of time or well, it'll just come up during the NOI review of the fact that whether to minimize some possible impacts on the wetlands where the number of parking spots is reduced or where there's a way to even have a partial waiver in some cases of the size of the parking spots in order to provide more of buffer to the wetlands. That's an issue that can be just thought about. It will certainly come up, I imagine during the NOI, but to the extent that people are thinking about it ahead of time, I just wanted to bring those things up.
Very helpful. There's a healthy tension there. Sean, we will definitely need some guidance from your team on that, but obviously the problem is literally hydraulic.
Real quick, Rick, too, just recognize that there's two kinds of different conditions. One, when you, when you have a parking spot that goes over like a landscaped area or a grassed area, you have a little bit more flexibility in, in, in how deep that stall needs to be. If it, if it bumps up to a sidewalk, you, you tend to want to maintain the depth on those. So maybe the, the happy medium is that for the ones that the bumper is allowed to overhang, maybe we can shorten those a bit. Well, maybe we'll leave the other ones the, the depth they are.
Yeah, no, it's something to play with. I just wanted to. Yeah, no, it's something to play with. I just wanted to keep it, bring it up now in terms of the extent that it makes difference to think about it now, given the amount of a buffer that's being used.
Can I make a comment on that?
Please.
The only reason we made them twenty feet deep is because apparently that's part of the rules. Twenty-two, twenty-two?
Yeah.
Well, that's even more. I mean, there's no reason for them to be that deep. If for some reason we're allowed to make them less, we're more than happy to redesign it to reduce the amount of impervious area for that purpose. And I agree with Sean's comment where there's a sidewalk, you want a little deeper. Otherwise, people have a tendency to put their front bumper over on the sidewalk. But in areas where they're on a sidewalk, it would be a very easy remedy to make them less. And I think frankly, from an environmental point of view, it's a better plan.
Do you want to address the number of parking spots, Roy?
Ideally, we'd like to maintain the parking spots. I'd much prefer to reduce the depth of them because, you know, with guest parking and all, and maybe in the winter, we use a few of them for a little extra snow storage, which I know has been brought up as a point. It's not unusual for us to consider that and another reason why sometimes we have a few more parking spaces that might be needed during the season. So I think a a good compromise with that would be to look at the plan where we don't have a sidewalk and consider reducing the depth of those parking spaces. If if the board is inclined to that and it looks like a positive for the for the CONCOM, we'd be happy to look at that.
I'm not who who decides about the the depth kind of allowances or waivers or whatever.
We'll we'll make some specific recommendations and then you guys can take it up wherever you want.
Right, I I I think, Michael, the the ZBA's position is we would like to accommodate the conscom wherever we reasonably can. And before Stephanie jumps up and corrects me, you know, there there's some pretty serious handcuffs on what we can say no to. So we have to, we have to thread those shawls carefully.
And my only comment on this is just that we have been able to show through the plan that we can accommodate the 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 length of parking spaces that's required under the bylaw. But should it be recommended through peer review or comments from conservation, that maybe the board may want to consider that. You know, if if the board were amenable to granting a waiver, as as Roy suggested, that, you know, we can go back and look at our plans to, you know, reduce those those lengths accordingly.
Well, other board members, I don't want to speak for you, but certainly for myself, if there's a happy medium that works from the standpoint of this apartment developer, what they think will work in their apartment and it will make our conscom happier in terms of wetlands impact, I'd be favorably inclined to think about that.
I don't have a strong opinion about this, to be honest. I mean, if you minimize the, you know, the impervious surface, that's a good thing for the environment, so.
Yes, that's what I think.
All right, got a pretty strong sense of the board there. Okay, great comment, Michael. Other comments like that from anybody, obviously, I maybe I didn't say this clearly enough, but I'll say it again. All of the issues that are in the subject of the the long letter of the twenty-seventh that that came in today responding to Tetra Tech. Those are still live issues. Those are under review. I think it was very helpful of Tetra Tech to say that the development team was extremely responsive. That's certainly what I heard from Tetra Tech. But if somebody out there reviewing these materials comes up with something, you know, these issues can be raised at 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 future meetings. It's they're not foreclosed. All right. We want to move to next steps.
Yes, I think so. Does the board have a, are they looking to schedule the next hearing in approximately four weeks?
Well, yeah, that tell me what's practical. It sounds like you've got a NOI that's going to go into conscom. Conscom has to digest your 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 very well-developed stormwater management plan. Presumably, Tetra Tech needs to spend a little more time with that too, but it sounds like they they like what they've seen so far. So so conscom and Tetra Tech, tell me what's a rational response time for you being able to get back what to us with your next set of comments with the materials that have come in. Obviously, Michael, they haven't even filed with you yet, so it's going to be hard for you to give a hard deadline.
Yeah, plus the the stormwater standards is really the peer review work is what's done. That's the main driver in terms of that particular part of the for the stormwater. I mean, it's really the notice of intent is really a whole other issue than the stormwater, but.
Well, does does roughly a month give conscom a a review window that sounds feasible?
You mean talking for the stormwater or they?
Stephanie, did you say the the NOI was going to land in a week to ten days?
Next week.
Next week. Next week. All right, so if you get it before next Friday, the seventh, is that what it is?
We might not see it. We might not open the hearing until later in February or depending on when it comes in, it could be the first week of March. And then it's going to take a while and we're going to need the peer reviewer to help us. I'm assuming the scope of the work for the for the peer reviewers to also support us on the wetland impact, if I recall correctly. So that's that's going to take some time. I don't, I would not predicate your next meeting on on our on how the NOI development and the order of conditions development is is going to take place. Because that's I I would not want to venture on that. Stormwater is has its own separate track.
And it's certainly easier for this board to continue a hearing that we've scheduled than to accelerate one that we didn't schedule. So Stephanie and team, I'm thinking maybe the suggestion of a month makes sense. We should try to look for some dates around there. Does that?
That makes sense.
If there's not time for everyone to go back and forth, it needs extended.
I'm sorry, Todd, I couldn't hear you.
I was just saying, if it needs to be extended, yeah, we can. It later.
Right, and 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 I I believe Gino and the sets of consultants have been quite good about going back and forth between the meetings. Which is legit and which we encourage them to do, move things ahead. Okay, so for next time, we we're going to have maybe some discussion of wetlands, depending on what's been filed, where some discussion of the stormwater, more if you will, I I shut down the early discussion, Matt. On the stormwater, we'll let you do your 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 full full dog and pony show. We'll want to spend some time next next time on the Metta Brook Residence Letter. Everyone will have a chance to digest that and think about their responses. And obviously, anybody's comments on the back and forth peer review, which is consolidated in the January twenty-seven. Letter from Civil Design Group. MDM Traffic, that's got my documents correct. All right, so let's pull up calendars. Well, the twenty-fifth of February is a Thursday.
I think that would be fine with us.
Ron?
Yeah, it's good, good.
I'm sorry, the the twenty-fifth?
Right, Thursday, February twenty-fifth.
Yes, that that is a good evening for me.
All right, I'm going to add some further discussion of the date. I'm going to make a motion that we continue this here. We thank everybody for their participation tonight and we continue the hearing to Thursday, February twenty-fifth at seven PM. Lively debate. Vigorous dissents. Second, I'll take any of those.
Second that.
All right. All in all in favor of Thursday, the twenty-fifth at seven, say aye, we'll do a roll card call, no backlogs, yes, aye?
Stefan, aye.
Fitch, aye.
All right, Genie, you have it.
Got it.
Okay, I'd also entertain a motion from a board member to adjourn at this point.
I move that we adjourn this meeting?
Second. Little anxious. All all in favor of adjourning, no back, yeah, no back, aye?
Fitch, aye.
All right, thank you all. We'll see you next month.
Thank you.